At this time, I'm going to call this special meeting in the legislature to order. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Everyone can be seated. Clerk has some announcements.
Fire evacuation plan. Please note that in the event of an emergency, the fire department has requested that legislators and all others move at least one block away from the county office building in order not to impede the firefighters in their duties. Cell phones, please silence cell phones for the duration of this special session. Microphones. Great timing there. Microphones. Please be reminded to use your microphones when speaking so that you are recorded for the official record. Roll call. Archer.
Present.
Bartels.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Donaldson.
Here.
Eckert. Fabiano.
Here.
Gerantine. Green.
Here.
Haines.
Here.
Hepner. Blitz.
Here.
Lopez. Mayo. Maloney James.
Here.
Maloney Joseph. Nolan.
Here.
Petit. Roberts.
Here.
Rodriguez. Ronk.
Here.
Woro.
Here.
And Waltman.
Here.
Twenty-two present and one absent.
All right, we're going to enter a brief period of public comment. We have four speakers signed up, I believe. Everyone please watch the timekeeper in the back of the room. Everyone's going to have three minutes to finish their comments. Please be respectful of all the other speakers and of the legislators as well. And Vicki, feel free to call the first person.
The first speaker is Callie Jane.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Callie Jane. I'm a Kingston resident, a mother, and executive director of Rise Up Kingston. And a year ago, I stood here as we discussed funding for the Restorative Justice Center. And I'm going to repeat what I said then because it is very relevant. We commend County Executive Mike Hine for taking this important step towards restorative justice in Ulster County. Due to the lack of resources within the school districts, teachers and school administrators are upholding policies that force students out of schools and into the criminal justice systems. These policies impact Black and Brown students at disproportionate rates. The funding for the Restorative Justice and Community Empowerment Center is necessary to slow down the school-to-prison pipeline and create brighter futures for the young people of our community. Now, I'm going to go to today. We have the opportunity to be a real leader here and not just to implement the legal requirements of Raise the Age because that is not restorative justice. And I fought hard for Raise the Age. And there were some challenges with the version that was passed at the state level, which is why I was thrilled to learn that Mike Hine was creating a restorative justice center and why I stood here a year ago when he asked me to. Today, I cannot say that we have been given proof that the Restorative Justice Center is going to meet the needs of slowing down the school-to-prison pipeline. Today, a seventeen-year-old will not benefit from the Restorative Justice Center. They are still considered adults under the phase-in of Raise the Age. And under Raise the Age, a sixteen-year-old who was charged with disorderly conduct, like Alisa Jordan, who raised her voice out of fear while watching her friend get arrested for trespassing on high school property, that child would not benefit from the Restorative Justice Center because of her violation of a disorderly conduct. The Restorative Justice Center needs to be an intervention before kids are in the criminal justice system, or we should change the name to the Raise the Age Center or Probation Junior. But we're not going to do that because I know here in Ulster County that we actually want to do the right thing. And the funding that has been proposed will give us the opportunity to really engage restorative justice experts, community groups, educators, and community members in creations of programs that fit the guidelines of what restorative justice is in order to do what we need it to do. And so I urge you to vote yes on the budget amendment to fund restorative justice programming and not just implementation of Raise the Age. And I look forward to continuing to work with Mike Hine and other members of the community on ensuring that the Restorative Justice Center actually contains restorative justice programming. Thank you.
The second speaker is Reverend James Childs.
Good evening. As I said, my name is Reverend James Childs. I'm the pastor of Pointe Prey's Family Life Center here in Kingston. I'm also a member of the Kingston City School Board Member, Board. About four years ago, as a member of the policy committee, we were concerned about the number of children that was being suspended from our school district. We were also concerned because a disproportionate number of those children were children of color. And so we decided we had to do something in order to make our school more effective and more fair for all of the children. So we changed our policy, a code of conduct, from a code of conduct, which was really a punitive policy, to a restorative justice-type policy. We've been working on that for four years. We brought in NYU, who has come in and have been working with us to make that happen. We've changed policies, and now we're changing the culture within the school so that we will not be causing children to be suspended from school. About a year ago, Mike Hines asked me if I would be part of a task force that he was creating for the county in order to bring in a restorative justice center for our children in the county. I was excited about that, to participate in that. And so for a year, we had been meeting. We had not only been meeting and talking to one another, but we've had people with expertise that have been talking to us. And again, I've gathered a lot of information over the four years in the school district of what restorative justice is. One of the things that I think is exciting to me is that it was not just a few people. There was at least twenty-five, thirty people from the community that is involved in that, representing a varied number of organizations, not-for-profit and so on, that had been involved with, working with our youth. This is an exciting program, and not only have we been part of laying out the building and making sure everything is there, but also to consider the programming and the finance and the funding that needed to go there. And Mike had assured us that what he was putting in the budget would be what we would need to make this happen. And we feel good with what is there. We don't see we need an extra hundred thousand dollars for that. We are doing what needs to be done, and it's going to grow as we go forth in the activities that we're going to do. Furthermore, what I would say is that we have been working for a year now, and we have not seen the county legislator come in with any programs, any suggestions to us. We would love to hear from everyone as to what should go in there, and we haven't seen that. We would hope that you would come because we've done things, and if there's more to be done, we'd like to hear about it. But I don't think that a decision should be made and not know what all the work that's gone in to make it what it is. So I'm here to say that I think that Mike Hines, his staff, and the task force has done a tremendous job to prepare us to deal with the needs of our children in this community.
Micah Blumenthal.
Hi, everyone. I'm here also as a member of the Restorative Justice Task Force, which I've been on for this past year. I want to say, first of all, I'm really proud of the work that we've done as a task force, being really community members who have repeatedly have gathered to go over the plans, look at the space, figure out what's there, and to challenge county exec, challenge ourselves at times for it to be all that it really can be. There's been times where we've have felt that, where's the community aspect? How will we address kids that aren't necessarily already in the system? How do we address at-risk? And we've continually made these things more and more a part of the process. But I'm also here tonight because I'm a little bit confused. There's a bill for more money on the table. I'm happy to have more money. But I'm confused as to where the money comes from, and I'm also confused as to how that either helps or hinders the process that's begun already with the task force. As Childs says, I haven't, there's this point, this thing that's happening right now where there seems to be confusion on both sides, there's a lack of clarity, and it seems though we have a task force that's meeting, and we need more people to meet there so we can actually hash out some of these things that, for me, are a little bit confusing. For one, there, I've heard talk about the money being specifically for bringing adults into the space. I've also understood there's a gray line where seventeen-year-olds are seen as adults for the next, until October. And for the work that we have done as a task force, this is for youth. This is for youth that are either in the system and also for at-risk youth who are not in the system. And so the work that we've done, the space that we've been working on, needs to be for that. So I'm hoping that some of these answers can, that I can get some clarity on some of these things, which right now, I really don't have. Thank you.
Gabrielle Hill.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you again. I am here from the Restorative Center in Newburgh, New York, and I just want to share a little bit about the work that we do regarding our teens and our young folks in Newburgh. So about four years, I would say about three years ago, I was working at a mentorship program, and there was a lot of altercations verbally and physically. And we were concerned about how we were going to be able to get the children to come in and have a peaceful and enjoyable time while they were at the center. So the Restorative Center has a teen program in which they work with kids from all ages. At this particular center, the ages are eleven to twenty-one. So we began to implement circles. So I started doing circles once a week with the children and allowing them the opportunity to speak about the things that were concerning them, the things that were causing them anger, and a lot of deep-rooted things that went traced back to their homes. And what I found that when we allow children to have their own space and to own it, they're more open to discuss things and find resolutions of their own. So when we have a peaceful environment at a center, then the children that would have altercations in the street or at the schoolhouse also come there, and so they can work out their differences at that center. So that would alleviate some of the altercations at school, which would alleviate some of the in-school and out-of-school suspensions, which our children don't benefit from when they're not in school. So that was just one of the things that stood out in my mind as I hear the conversation about how we can help our children moving forward and how we can alleviate some of the police contact and the juvenile detentions and the incarceration of so many youth. And that was just one idea that came to my mind. And I also thought about the community-building aspect. When communities come together and have an opportunity to talk in a safe environment where everybody's voice feels, everybody's voice is heard and there's no power structure, that everyone that is sitting in that circle has equal power, equal time to be heard, and every single issue is just as important as the next, we're more off, you know, we're more ready to talk and have conversation with one another. A lot of the problems that I see even on a family basis is because we don't communicate well because of different reasons, whether it's our ego, we don't want to let go of certain things, I have to be right, or some long, you know, issue that happened in childhood, or whatever the case. You know, having these circles with our children in this restorative justice program is so vital for the future. What is it going to look like for my granddaughter and my grandson when they're seventeen and eighteen years old and they're able to work things out with their peers because they've had this restorative justice training? Thank you.
Shalee Agnatri.
Good evening. My name is Shalee Agnatri. I am actually, own a home in Ulster County, so it's great to meet you all. I'm also an attorney. I was a prosecutor in Orleans Parish in Louisiana, where my family, where I grew up. Did sex crimes prosecutions. It was a very violent community when I lived there. Then I was a public defender in New York City for many, many years. And so I am well-versed in the complications of resolving disputes and conflicts in the criminal justice system. And I actually quit my job as a public defender to try to figure out a different way forward because at some point, seeing the same people again and again with the same issues again and again and the same answers again and again did seem like insanity. So I actually am thrilled to be here discussing restorative justice with you because the answer I came to is the same answer Ulster County is coming to, that we need to figure out a different way forward. And restorative justice is a great label to try to sort out what that is. And I'm really proud that my county is starting a restorative justice center. And I feel like the door that you have opened is one important door into the process of restorative justice. What I'm urging you all to consider is that that door, which right now is guarded by police officer in handcuffs because you need a police encounter to get into it, is just one possibility for restorative justice. It's an important possibility and a great beginning, but the other nine ways to get into the process of restorative justice are equally important and probably more transformative for communities. So I have a written statement that I'm also leaving behind, but I just wanted to suggest that when we can have a community-based opportunity for our communities to come together, to resolve and discuss issues around police misconduct, about the inability of us to come to resolution, about gentrification issues, issues about the environment, that that model of restorative justice is truly transformative for a community. Because not only is restorative justice a possibility for government to repair the relations with its citizens, but it is also an opportunity for our communities to build bridges amongst themselves that have previously been ruptured. So there's, there is, this is a huge moment in time when, when we can take a great vision that has already been manifest here and really expand it to the possibility that is available to us. Because all of us right now are searching for deep, profound change. We do not want bandages. We want real transformation. So thank you very much.
All right, that's the last speaker, so we're going to move on into resolutions. Are there? One by one? I don't think there's any no's on any of them, so why don't we just block them all together? You comfortable blocking them all together? I mean, I mean, 474 through 478, I don't believe there are any no's on, so you fine taking them as a block? No objection? All right, hearing no objection, we'll take the vote on resolutions 474 through 478.
We are a short yes with one abstention. Legislator Jim Maloney on resolution 474.
We're a short yes.
For purpose of his employment, before anybody asks.
The resolutions are adopted twenty-two to zero with the exception of resolution 474, which is adopted twenty-one to zero with one abstention. Legislator James Maloney.
All right.
Resolution 479, adopting the Ulster County budget for a fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2019, and making appropriations for the conduct of county government.
If everybody's comfortable, we're going to move through these amendments one by one. Yep, I know. So amendment number one is moved by legislator Woro, seconded by legislator Donaldson. On the amendment?
We are a short yes with one no. Legislator Nolan. Is that correct? Everybody? Going once, twice, twice? Okay. We are a short yes with one no. Let's wait in Nolan.
The amendment is adopted twenty-one to one.
Amendment number two is moved by legislator Gerantine and seconded by legislator Ronk.
We are a short yes.
We are a short yes with one abstention. Legislator Joseph Maloney.
The...
His wife...
I understand.
...from the department. But, and...
The amendment is adopted twenty-one to zero with one abstention. Legislator Joe Maloney.
Amendment number three is moved by legislator Gerantine, seconded by legislator Ronk.
Short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number four is moved by legislator Gerantine, seconded by legislator Ronk.
We are a short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number five is moved by legislator Donaldson and seconded by legislator Haines, Collins, et al.
We are a short yes with one no. Legislator Nolan.
The amendment is adopted twenty-one to one.
Amendment number six is moved by legislator Donaldson, seconded by legislator Haines, Collins, et al.
Mr. Chairman, I want a point...
Would you like me to, would you like me to read them all out loud? They're in the record in the packet, but...
You know, as, as much as I would love that, Mr. Chairman, that was not the question I was going to...
Oh, I apologize.
Just...
Yes, sir.
To, to the chair. Just to make sure that I'm just, I'm clear. So, you know, the original amendment was offered by legislator Donaldson, meaning six and seven. And it was to, to move them forward. It was then decided by Ways and Means to, I think at that point, then they were moved to contingency. So I want to make sure that it's clear, I mean, just for accuracy.
I understand.
Should it read Donaldson et al. to move it to contingency?
I don't know. It was, there was a statement made at Ways and Means that legislator Donaldson consented to these, so I hadn't heard differently.
And that's, no, no, and that's fine.
Oh, legislator Donaldson.
I consented to them because it looked like it was going to go down because they didn't like the way they put the request in, even though, you know, they've been requesting that. We've been giving them the money for quite a long time. But anyway, so I, I consented to that.
I mean, the idea is they're going to come forth with the proper method of request, and
then we should be able to move it out of the contingency.
Perfect.
I think one of the questions were, is it okay that we earmark that in contingency? And that's what my concern is. I think we, we can do that, so I agree with that.
All right. Thank you, legislator Donaldson.
So number six, I apologize, Mr. Chair. Short yes with, with two noes. Legislators Collins and Nolan.
Amendment number seven is sponsored by, moved by legislator Donaldson. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Amendment number six is adopted twenty to two.
Amendment number seven is moved by legislator Donaldson, seconded by legislator Haines, Collins, et al.
We are a short yes with two noes. Legislators Collins and Nolan.
The amendment is adopted twenty to two.
Amendment number eight is to, I'm sorry, is amendment, amendment number eight is moved by legislator Rodriguez, seconded by legislator Haines, Collins, et al.
We are a short yes with one no. Legislator Nolan.
The amendment is adopted twenty-one to one.
Amendment number nine is moved by legislator Waltman, seconded by legislator Ronk.
We are a short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number ten is moved by legislator Rodriguez, seconded by legislator Hepner.
We are a short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number eleven is moved by legislator Rodriguez, seconded by legislator Hepner.
We are a short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number twelve is moved by legislator Archer. We have a second? Seconded by legislator Bartels.
On the question, there is, this, this is the one that we're not really moving to on it because there has been a changes. So I think we may want to take this at the end after whatever changes had take place, and then we can adjust the number on this.
Legislator Rodriguez.
I mean, we, we're, I get what you're saying.
Through the chair to legislator Donaldson.
Through the chair, legislator Donaldson. So I hear what you're saying. I mean, obviously, if there are other amendments that get approved, they will automatically move this, change the number on this resolution, simply because the amount of dollars that are actually there get changed.
Right, but the, it's much easier if you put it towards the end, and then you know exactly what it is because we know what passed, and then we know what the number will be because Amber will be figuring that all out, and we'll have that number right at the end.
Any objection? Hearing no objection, we'll, you know...
Mr. Chair, why don't I, why don't I just formally do this? I would like, at this time, like to postpone until we have gone through all other relevant amendments. Postpone, uh...
I think legislator Archer already withdrew her motion, so we're fine.
Well, I mean, let's just, let's just try to do this.
Legislator Archer, do you withdraw your motion on this amendment?
I withdraw it at this point.
Just don't forget to make it again.
And Tracy, and legislator Bartels withdrew her second, so we'll move on to another amendment, and I'm sure they'll, they'll make that at the end. Amendment number thirteen is to, I'm sorry, amendment number thirteen is moved by legislator Archer, seconded by legislator Bartels? No, twelve is the one we're holding off on. Legislator Bartels already seconded, but thank you. On the amendment?
We are a short yes, and Mr. Chair, just, just for, just so maybe the public actually understands what, what these things are, just, I'm not trying to be pedantic, but just making sure that in this case, we are just moving money to contingency for what was the, the quote-unquote "town economic development match" program, so that way we can go and put the program parameters in there. I mean, it's a thing where, I'm not trying to...
Just allow us to have a plan.
Exactly. Why make sure that, because people are going to hear this, or they're going to see this on TV, and they're just not going to know what each of these amendments are.
I understand.
Maybe we should want to just read the...
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
And your votes are?
They said it. So the amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number fourteen is to fund the Don't Be a Monster program in Ulster County for five thousand dollars. It's moved by legislator Petit, seconded by legislator Rodriguez.
We are a short yes with the following noes. Legislators Archer, Bartels, Joseph Maloney, and Nolan.
The amendment is adopted eighteen to four.
Amendment number fifteen is to increase funding for the Ulster County SPCA for spay-neuter services in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars, moved by legislator Petit, seconded by legislator Hepner.
We are a short yes.
The amendment is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Amendment number sixteen, thank you. Amendment number sixteen is to hire an external contractor to help coordinate the green business volunteers amongst other duties within the Environmental Control Department. I'm sorry, in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Legislator Rodriguez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, at, at this point, I am, I am concerned, and I would actually, again, I'm not trying to be confrontational, but was this passed through, as I recollect, through Ways and Means unanimously, I, I thought? Did it not? Oh, no, I'm sorry, six to two. I apologize. I'm going to stand corrected. It says six to two. You know, I mean, is there a specific reason as to why this amendment is being voted down?
Huh? This is, we're voting on it now.
I, I, she just said short no, so I was just, I was concerned suddenly that if, if, if there is a, you know... Okay, I apologize, but it's just more a matter of making sure that if, if this is going down, I just want to understand the why. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that, and I apologize, but it was, it was, it was concern, it was concern. We are a short yes with one no. Legislator Nolan.
The amendment is defeated eleven-eleven.
I...
We hadn't gotten there yet.
We got a lot of seconds.
And legislator Waltman. Recognize legislator, legislator Waltman? Not on that, okay. No.
Okay. What was, I was going to say, what was the vote on that one?
Eleven-eleven. Defeated.
Yeah, well, it... Go ahead. I got a, I got a question, but...
Amendment number seventeen is to fund a community-based restorative justice program beyond youth who have had police contact for the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Legislator Rodriguez moves it, seconded by legislator Donaldson. On the amendment?
We are a short yes with the following noes. Legislators Collins and Nolan.
The amendment is defeated eleven-eleven.
Amendment number eighteen, to add two new positions to, within the clerk of the legislature, hiring is intended to be staggered. The total amount is one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and two dollars, including benefits. dollars, including benefits. Legislator Petit.
Um, I would like to make an amendment to this, um, to this amendment, um, that we decrease the positions proposed from two to one, um, but we increase that position to that of, not of a junior, but a fiscal analyst, um, and I'm sorry, I don't have the salary in front of me.
Amber will work it up.
Well, I was gonna say, don't we actually have that in a different, in a different amendment?
It is. Um, the amount funded for that would be-
I mean, if the, if the recommended budget then reads as sixty-two, six, seven, nine, and there is an amendment at some point to raise it to seven, seventy thousand, seven, twenty-three-
Yeah, it would be-
Um, basically, basically, it would be at, at the minute to go-
Seventy thousand, seven, twenty-three.
Yeah, exactly, to go and fund it at that level, correct?
Yes, correct.
But, given that, uh, and again, just for clarity's sake, technically speaking, her amendment should probably then be for the, what, I hate seeing it like this because it's very personal, but for what that position is basically paid now, which is six-two, six, seven, nine, and then contingent upon the other amendment passing-
I'm comfortable with that.
That would then basically up, up that, right?
All right, legislative, legislative Petit is, you know, that's your amendment?
And that's convoluted? It's, it's convoluted, but it's, it's accurate.
It's not so convoluted. Uh, seconded by legislator Donaldson, legislator Litz, oh, um, on the, on the amendment, legislator, ma'am?
On the amendment, we are a short yes.
The amendment-
Wait, on, on the amendment, you're a no is on?
On the amendment-
To the amendment-
To the amendment.
Is adopted twenty-two to zero.
Remember, she has to go and do that part first, which is basically delete the position, and then change the other part, and then we have to vote on the overall amendment.
On the amendment, in whole.
Okay. On the amendment as, as, as now amended, we are a short yes with one no, legislator Nolan.
The amendment as amended is adopted twenty-one to one.
All right, um, then amendment number nineteen is to remove all management non-union increases from the 2018 adopted budget to the 2019 executive recommended budget greater than two percent.
No, because I'm saying, this is yes, I'm saying yes.
Uh, legislator Archer, it's moved by legislator Archer, seconded by legislator Maloney? Okay. Let, you want to speak? Legislator Maloney, Joe Maloney.
I just wanted to, you know, I'm in, I'm in support of legislator Archer on this, and it's, it sounds like we're saying no, but we're saying yes in a couple of weeks after we do our due diligence and receive a report. Um, I am in support of almost every one of these raises in the, in its entirety, not just the legislative raises, um, but I do think there's some due diligence that should be done, uh, and there was a report asked for, and that is the only thing. I think we've had a lot of conversations with different legislators, and some of it, there was a lot of confusion, and there were people that were under the impression that this was kind of a no vote, but it, not at all was that. It was, it was a, let's do our due diligence.
Legislator Archer?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I felt we had a number of amendments before us that were salary increases significantly above what this management group was typically getting, which is two percent. Having said that, in the, in the amendment process, we had lengthy conversations on a number of these different jobs, and we felt that we needed to do a quick, uh, analysis to determine if we're paying, uh, these, if we're putting increases in that are appropriate compared to the population that we're looking at. We had asked for the data, um, so that we were making informed decisions, and that we were just not increasing without information and with which to look at equity across the board, and sure, we're paying similar jobs, and they're not all alike, but similar jobs in a similar way. Unfortunately, we did not get the additional information that we requested, and we felt that, to be fair, and to be able to look at this across the board for this particular group, they are not, they are man, they're management jobs, non-union, so they're not prescriptive increases, it is more subjective, and we felt that it was really important to step back, look at these, in, in conjunction with the recommendations, particularly anybody getting more than the two percent. This was not intended to say nobody was getting it, it is saying we're pulling it out of the budget to take a look at it, so that we're looking across the board and making decisions from an equity perspective. And, uh, so, having said all that, again, um, I'm supportive of this, because I believe that it allows us to take a moment to look at and get the analysis, well, I'm told we should get it sometime this week, and look at these increases in an, from an equity perspective. Thank you.
Legislator Donaldson.
So, this is just, uh, deferring those that are above two percent?
That's correct.
The other people that are, only got two percent will get theirs.
Yeah, every, every management employee is receiving at least two, is receiving two percent. The, the legislator Archer's proposal is just the ones above two percent. Uh, legislator Gerantin?
Thank you. Well, this was for a proposal in Ways and Means, I supported it one hundred percent. I thought it'd be quite a few different employees. As it turns out to be, it's approximately nine employees. Uh, the nine employees that we have here, uh, one increase is two hundred dollars, another increase is four hundred dollars. Uh, there's two positions that are funded, that are gonna be reimbursed through revenues, through, uh, early hearing bill, uh, that's basically a state mandate that they're gonna reimburse us for the two positions. There's two positions that went from a fifty-hour work week to a sixty-hour work week, and then there's one that, with the UCAT, that, uh, basically, we're gonna be hopefully merging with Kingston Bus, uh, UCAT, so we need, uh, personnel to make that transition happen. And the last one basically is, uh, reconstruction of the Public Works Department, which, uh, basically, Brian Cunningham used to be Director of Public Works, if that was his title, was making ninety thousand a year, uh, that position's no longer there, that ninety thousand went to two people with different titles, so they escalated their salaries regarding that. So, in saying all that, uh, I agree that, uh, we should be looking at any salaries over two percent, which included all these people, but I think these are all justified, and, uh, this is all money that's already in the budget, and I would say one other thing, I took the liberty to call the Benjamin Group, uh, after we had that conversation in Ways and Means regarding salary comparisons, and they're willing to do a salary comparison within Ulster County, uh, on different parameters that we're gonna ask them to do at no cost, or that's under the cost of what they have done. Uh, the only thing they ask, they might not have it done, you know, in a, a week or two weeks, but they're, they'll work on it if we agree that that's what we'd like to do, give them the parameters to look at, uh, different titles throughout the county, and see how they're paid in different departments, and how they're compared to the other counties. So, in saying all that, uh, I would rec, I would recommend to, uh, say, uh, against this resolution amendment.
Legislator Joe Maloney?
I was under the impression there was more than nine positions, but, once again, it's, I'm, I'm kinda, I'll be curious to hear where, what positions they are, and how we got to that number, just that nine, and what you were talking about there.
It's, legislator Maloney, just point of information, the, the positions, I, I think, are in, um, in the amendment, uh, personnel listing two-eleven, two-thirteen, two-twenty-five, um, legis, uh, do you want to keep going?
No.
All right. Uh, legislator Nolan, followed by legislator Donaldson, followed by legislator Archer.
Yes, I, I agree with, um, legislator Gerantin on this. I think that, in looking at it carefully, um, for each of the nine positions, there is sufficient information, and I think that we also did have some more general information that was provided, um, actually quite a long time ago, to do some of this work. So, I think, um, we should go ahead and accept these, um, increases. I support doing the larger, deeper look, but I think that's more than a few weeks-long activity to be done correctly. We probably have a lot of positions in Ulster County, uh, that may not have parity with, um, similar positions in other counties, and I am concerned that we really need to look carefully at what makes those positions desirable, and many people have stayed in those positions. It seems to me it's a lot like the, uh, people like myself, who have often worked in a nonprofit realm, where we work in an environment that we choose to work in for reasons other than pure salary considerations. So, I think that the potential implications of a very broad salary, um, study by this group are, are potentially very large, and it should be done, uh, quite carefully, not squeezed into a couple of weeks in January. So, I prefer to go ahead and address these nine positions now, and then do a really thorough, careful look, um, as legislator Archer has suggested.
Legislator Donaldson?
I have a question on the UCAT stuff that maybe, uh, legislator Gerantin may be able to answer.
Through the chair to legislator Gerantin?
Um, yes, I was, uh, my, when you brought that up, I realized that there's the merger that's taking place, and there is a labor issue that the city of Kingston members, uh, drivers were paid slightly more than that of the county, and I believe that was one of the prospects of, maybe that is, is that one of these things, why that person or these people may have, uh, gotten a, a slight bump in order to create the, um, equity amongst the, uh, drivers and such?
Legislator Gerantin?
Truthfully, I don't, I do not know if that was part of that, but I mean, to get a qualified person to sit at the helm of this different department, uh, with the merger, uh, they need a little more professional person than they have in right now.
The position is the Deputy Director of Public Transit, legislator Donaldson. Uh, legislator Archer?
I guess data can tell you whatever you wanted to tell you, so, and while I respectfully understand that we're talking about small amounts, I think it may be helpful for me to take a couple steps back and explain how we got to where we are on this particular amendment. When we were going through last week, all of the amendments being proposed, coming before us was Holly Conright for, uh, increases for, uh, some of the folks on his team, they're thousands of dollars, they're not a couple hundred here, a couple hundred there, a thousand here, a thousand there, they're thousands of dollars, and it's for multiple people. We have increases ourselves that we're putting forth, that are thousands of dollars. I am not saying that any one of the employees don't deserve this, what I am saying is that in an effort to, uh, from a fairness perspective, anything over two percent in this management category was earmarked to be put on hold until we can look at all of this and make some informed decisions. I, I can't see us making budget decisions without understanding the implications within the context of this management, non-management group, where there's a lot more subjectivity because they are not subject to a contract. So, I agree, some of them may not seem like a lot, but I think it was in the effort of being fair and equitable, if we're gonna hold it, anything over two percent should be looked at and held off until we can get the data. And to say that we had the data months ago, and I will correct through the chair, um, my fellow legislator Nolan, I want to be really clear, when we were in this amendment process, I asked our, our, the folks in, in our office whether or not they could get some of this specific salary data to be able to do the analysis, and, and I was told that, yes, we can get some of it, but we can't get all of it, you really need to go to the Commissioner of Finance. He was sitting here in the meeting, I took the list, I went back to him, I showed him, no problem, we could get it, it was all within the context of discussing salaries, so there should have been no misunderstanding about the fact that we needed this data so that we could make an informed decision. We have no access to this information, otherwise we would have done it ourself, and so, I, I just want us all to be clear, that this is about getting the information so we can be, we can do our jobs properly, we're appropriating money, we're making decisions, but we're making decisions without all the facts, and I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Legislator Rodriguez?
You know, this just gets back to, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to, uh, pick a fight with the executive, but, you know, this information was asked for, you know, previously, um, you know, well over a week ago, which is why, when this came to Ways and Means, there was some measure of, I think, agreement, um, you know, that information hadn't been properly provided in advance, so we could actually begin to assess in each of these instances, which of these is sort of real, and, and we should be supportive of, or which ones maybe we have more, we have more questions on. And so, you know, I, I understand, you know, this is hard, there's a lot of great programs in here. I am deeply committed to, to providing funds to the Public Defender's Office, for example, right? But, you know, it's also part and parcel, I think, of a much larger conversation that we have, of, of us being able to do our due diligence, being able to appropriately and fully understand, in each of these instances, where, you know, where and why these raises are, are necessary, right? Whether in certain cases, maybe it's job function, in certain cases, maybe it's a, you know, a, a situation where somebody was supposed to have gotten a raise previously, and it was held off on. So, you know, it, that's, I think, the level of discourse that we should be having in this legislature. So, I understand, I mean, like, this, this is hard, these are a lot of great programs, they're near and dear to all of our hearts, but I also understand why legislator Archer brought this up.
Legislator Bartels?
Yes, and I, I wanna, I wanna thank legislator Archer for bringing this up, I mean, I, this is, um, this is indicative of our need to do our due diligence, and just days ago, in Ways and Means, we agreed unanimously that this was the path we should take, and now, with all due respect, the Chair of that committee says that he's received information that all the rest of us have not universally received. So, we're asking for a, a small beat of time, as was articulated by both legislators, Archer and legislator Maloney, this delay does not mean in any way that we do not support these raises, this, and we can support them retroactively, they can be fully funded once all the information is before all of us equally, and each of us can do our due diligence.
Legislator Joe Maloney?
Yeah, I'd like to point out, too, that, uh, you know, what legislator Archer asked for was fairly basic, and something that I would have assumed, and I think that point was made last time we spoke of this, something that I assume the executive staff had to make the, to, to set the budget. I mean, I, I really felt like what, what Lynn asked for should have been like here, and, and then we could have looked at it. How are they making these decisions without the kind of information that we're asking for? I think, um, legislator Bartels just pointed out something that's been frustrating to a lot of people, that there's, it, it really is, the nicer you are, the more access and information you get, and, uh, why are certain legislators getting certain information and certain tidbits? And something else, I mean, from what I understand, the executive has been very proactive with opinions on our own staff, and what we're gonna do with our own staff, with all due respect. Can legislators make the decision on this skeleton crew that we have? If we want to add a, a budget analyst, can we make that decision ourselves, or does every one of us have to get a pressurized phone call to tell us we don't need something, or we don't need a raise? So, later on, we can get more people poached, like, uh, departments that aren't under the exec's umbrella commonly do. They get poached and given raises once they enter the exec's, uh, you know, this stuff has to stop, and when we ask for information, we have to, we have to have it, and it should be being there, it should be there already.
Legislator Nolan?
Through the chair to legislator Bartels, I think that, uh, quite a bit of the information that legislator Gerantin mentioned is contained in the details of amendment nineteen, it is, which was sent to all the legislature, legislators.
On the amendment, oh, legislator Gerantin?
I received this, uh, list from Amber yesterday. Lynn already had the list, uh, that I'm aware of.
I got it yesterday as well.
I, okay, so, when I got the list, I looked at it, and I said, whoa, what are we talking about here? Because that Ways and Means meeting, I had a very big concern about many positions. I mean, as it turned out, it was very nine positions, and like I said, there was some that were gonna be funded by the state, uh, various other reasons, uh, why, for, you know, for part-time to full-time. So, I took the liberty to call the Finance Department, and I must be a nice person, because he talked to me. And, uh, you know, I asked him point-blank, you know, what about this job, what about this job, what about this job? And there again, you know, as I said earlier, this is the information that was given to me, this is the reasons why. In saying that, yes, I'm concerned about everybody's salary in this county, and how it interacts with other departments in this county, how it interacts with other counties that were, uh, around our surrounding areas, and that's why I called Jerry Benjamin up and said, hey, you know, in your contract, you have to do a report of some type, would you be willing to do some kind of salary evaluation of some type? And he said, yes, he would, but the question, you know, there again, is very open, we haven't defined what we're looking for, what we want to look for.
I think we're going around in circles.
What's that?
We're, I think these have already been, you know, comments have already been made, yeah, I just-
Okay, so, my bottom line is that, you know, this was given to me yesterday, from there, I just move forward to do my due diligence.
Legislator Archer?
Yes, I, and I, and I understand that, but we're losing sight of the fact that this was intended to be a holdup of anything over two, so that we could do our due diligence for everyone in this group, and not just those that are already getting an increase. And so, the only way to do this fairly, with the ones that were before us, from the district attorney, from our own office, was also to look at what was being done in the management group, that doesn't have to come before us for amendments, because it's already baked into the budget, is anything over two percent. So, it, it, all it was intended to do was to have a fair, uh, playing field, regardless of the size of the- the size of the increase. I mean, it's, the fact of the matter is, you got to put the, you have to put, set the bar somewhere. And if we're going to treat everyone, we're going to treat them fairly and equitably and look at this issue on an equitable basis. And that's what I think we're losing sight of. Thank you.
We call a question.
Question's been called. Legislature Mayo.
We are a short yes with one no, Legislature Nolan.
And Pettit.
Okay, any other no's? All right. All right, well, you guys were babies in caucus. Apparently, I'm going to call it long roll.
Come on Hector. Did you get three?
Okay, are there any, are there any other no's? All right, so apparently we are a short yes with the following no's, Legislators Donaldson, Pettit, and Nolan.
The amendment is defeated eight to 14.
Amendment number 20, to increase the regular pay of four positions within the Clerk of the Legislature and to make adjustments to two position titles. Oh, I'm sorry, I should do it right. To increase the regular pay of three positions within the Clerk of the Legislature to make adjustments to two position titles. Legislature Rodriguez, do you want to amend it to include a fourth? Which would be the newly created second fiscal analyst?
That's fine. I, I will, I will, well, actually, it should probably, it should probably be offered first before I amend.
All right, fair enough. Offered, offered by Legislature Hepner, seconded by Legislature Ronk.
I will, I guess, at this point, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess, offer to amend this resolution to include the second Deputy Clerk of the Legislature Financial Analyst, which would then read at 62, 67, 679, and then be increased, I guess, to 77, I'm sorry, 70,723. Making sure I'm, I'm following the same, the same thing that's there.
Yeah, amendment moved by Legislature Rodriguez, seconded by Legislature Mayo. On the amendment to the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Yes, sir.
How many financial analysts are we putting in the budget?
One.
One, we're adding one.
We've already amended it to include one.
Very good, thank you.
It says that mirrors, through the Chair to Legislature Maloney, it's just to make sure that it matches from the other one that we already did. So therefore, this is the one where you're actually increasing that from where one.
Yeah, and this is, and this is also to, you know, just make it fiscal analyst, not deputy clerk and fiscal analyst.
Oh, you wanted to read as fiscal analyst and not deputy clerk fiscal analyst? I, I guess I will, as, as I misspoke, clearly it was only financial analyst.
Just for the new one, yes.
Yes, all right, for the new one.
All right, moved by Rodriguez, seconded by Mayo. On the amendment?
We are a short, we are a short yes with the following no's, Bartels and Archer.
And Maloney.
Anybody else? Okay.
On the amendment in chief.
That's just my amending it to change that.
On the amendment in chief, Legislature Archer.
Yes, and, and I just want to explain my no. This is no reflection on the individuals. This has everything to do with the fact that we're making a decision without having all of the information and looking at the management group as a whole. And I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Legislature Bartels.
Yes, on the amendment as a whole, I concur with Legislature Archer.
Is the point of information?
Yep, Legislature Gerantin.
Those people did not receive any increase whatsoever, not the 2%.
We, we understand that.
Yeah, but it was stated that everybody's getting a 2%, right?
They're not getting 2%.
Not on top of these salary increases. That's his point. On the amendment?
On the amendment, we are a short yes with the following no's, Archer, Bartels, and Joseph Maloney. Anybody else that I'm not aware of?
On the amendment as amended, it is adopted 19 to 3.
Amendment 21, to create the position of Deputy Director of Audit in place of the Administrative Assistant within the Office of Comptroller. Moved by Legislature Bartels, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Archer. On, you want to speak?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
On the resolu, on the amendment, Legislature Rodriguez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, I just need to, I guess, you know, through the, through the Chair to Legislature Bartels, um, you know, can you, I guess, further elaborate, you know, like the reasons why you brought this position up? Thank you.
Legislature Bartels.
Thank you. So, for, for anyone who wasn't at the Ways and Means Committee meeting where I spoke on this subject, what I'm proposing is to change the position of Administrative Assistant to Deputy Director Auditor and require that that person be a certified CPA. Along with that proposal, I'm proposing that we, the Legislature, change our relationship to the Comptroller by beginning in this coming year to request and direct certain studies to come out of that office, which we're allowed to do by charter. And this person, if so qualified, would be better situated to be able to effectuate that change. I think that, I think we bear some responsibility for not having this relationship with the Comptroller up to this point. And I also think that now is the time that rather than to sit back and, and wait for change or to, to watch the he said, he said fight that goes back and forth, we have to, I believe, take a stand to effectuate that change. I also stated, and I'll state it again publicly, that there have been conversations, if, if everyone hasn't heard it, I certainly have about the possibility of a charter revision to get rid of the Comptroller and move that responsibility under the Office of the Legislature. That conversation has been had both within and without the Legislature, through the, through members of the Executive's Office, through members of this Legislature, and through members of interested, interested parties outside, outside both bodies. And I, I for one, believe in the intent of the Charter. I believe that the creation of the Comptroller's Office as an elected office was a, a smart move. And I, I want to be a part of a positive effect to that change. And that's why I'd like to see this position that, again, I'm not offering a new position, I'm offering a change in the qualification of the existing position. That's why I'd like to see this change happen. And by the way, it did not, it did not, it did fail Ways and Means, but not with no votes.
Legislature Nolan.
I support the intent of the resolution, but I think that we can achieve some of those ends and maybe all of those ends without making this change. I'm also concerned that this office is one that just needs an administrative assistant. So, I would have been happier to support something like this in addition to an administrative assistant rather than instead of. There have been persistent complaints from the Comptroller's Office that they don't have somebody to answer the phone. And I'd prefer not to have somebody at this level hired into an office and still nobody assigned to answer the phones.
On the amendment?
We are listed, this can't be right, we're listed, Kathy, you're a no, right? Okay. I was going to say, so I guess we, we are a short yes with, with one no, Legislature Nolan, and one abstention, Legislature Joseph Maloney.
The amendment is defeated 10 to 12 with one abstention, Legislature Joseph Maloney.
Amendment number 22 is to increase the regular pay of two positions within the District Attorney. Within the District Attorney's Office. Moved by Legislature Joe Maloney, seconded by Legislature Donaldson. On the amendment, oh, Legislature Joe Maloney.
I'd like to say something real quick. There is talk of a comprehensive salary study, if we do one, and we take a look at comparisons around the county. I would like to note that these are 10-plus years of employment from these two individuals. But if there was a comprehensive salary study, we'd hear that 23 probation officers will be earning more than these two District Attorneys, most of which have county cars. All county attorneys earn more, from the County Attorney's Office. Two county attorney paralegals, after a 6.5% raise this year, will be bringing their salary over these two ADAs. Two county attorney paralegals, after a 6.5% raise, will be bringing their salary over these two ADAs. A new hire in the Public Defender's Office will be starting at roughly what these two are at right now, after 10 years. A paralegal in social services will, is earning more than these two Assistant District Attorneys. Full-time public defenders can earn extra income on the side as well, DAs cannot. Every public defender, every public defender makes more than these two DAs. A new hire in the Public Defender's Office will start at $7,000 more than these two Assistant Tur, uh, uh, ADAs, Assistant District Attorneys. And I think if we took a look at other counties, we'd, it'd be even more daunting how underpaid these two District Attorneys are in Ulster County. So, I just thought, those are the kinds of things we're going to hear. I don't know if we need to wait to hear all these things in a report from the Benjamin Center, but this will be some of the things we'll, we'll be hearing. The District Attorney, who is a countywide elected official, has come year after year and asked for these things, and very rarely has gotten anything but a 2% raise. I mean, when, when we think about it, you know, in 60-something thousand dollars for two Assistant District Attorneys that have been here for 10 years is gross, I, I think they're grossly underpaid and that they're taking things home on weekends and not being paid for it. I would also like to note that the part-time public defenders also make far more than the part-time District Attorneys. So, with that, I hope people will be open-minded to maybe a yes vote here, a very, very modest $7,000 raise for these two individuals.
Legislature Archer.
I'm going to have to be a no, as much as compelling as Legislature Maloney's data input just now, the reality is, this is the very reason why we need to be looking at a salary survey. So, I am a no, not because I don't believe they deserve it, it's, I'm a no because I believe it's hard to make a decision without information. Thank you.
Legislature Donaldson.
You know, when I look at the, what these two attorneys get paid, and can you compare that with the other attorneys that are paid in the County Attorney's Office? And you look at what they're paid, it is absurd. I mean, it really is absurd. You look at this, and I've, I've said this again and again throughout time when the DA has come before us for increases for these salaries. As Legislature Maloney pointed out, they cannot take side jobs. They have to do this. That is their job. Someone with a law degree being paid $68,000 a year is absurd. And they're the ones that are supposedly there defending the people that, in other words, you know, dealing with people that commit criminal crimes, and they're the ones that prosecute. So, if they're going to be the ones that prosecute, you need to have somebody that is, has the ability to do that. I also support the, the same idea with the public defenders. I've always felt that's the whole idea, they should be paid well, because you want someone representing their client to the best of their ability and to have that ability. The idea that, and what ends up happening is, in the DA's office, it's hard to keep anybody longer than a couple years. You can probably talk to any attorney that comes, talks to you at some point, ask him if they would consider a job in the DA's office. They have to have the passion to do this. But the point is, you need people to be paid for what they do. And this is absurd for what, what they're being paid. I can't even fathom it. There's teachers that are paid above that after 10 years without a problem. And I agree with it, they should be. But a DA, it seems like each year we do the same thing to them. We keep telling them, no, 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 and we say, well, we're going to study it and find out, and it ends up being a no in the end. So, yes, I'll support this, 100%.
Anybody else want to speak before Legislature Maloney? I think I saw your hand up, Legislature Archer, I'm sorry, Eckert? No, okay. Legislature Maloney.
I would just like to point out that if we don't pass this with all, with all the talk and much of which I agree with about doing our due diligence and, and having the right kind of information before making decisions like this, I, these will basically be the only two people that don't get raises. The people in the, the attorneys and the paralegals and the Public Defender's Office and the County Attorney's Office will all be getting their raises. So, as we make, some of us make this stand that I agree with, we're really only costing two people a raise. All those other raises are set in the budget and they're getting them, which will bring all of them even more kind of out of sync with where these two District, Assistant District Attorneys are. Can I call a long roll on this? All right.
You can if you want.
Well, think about that info as we go around and, and make this vote, because they're the only two that are, that are, that are suffering what we're, what we're trying to do here.
But before we do, is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Okay. Long roll?
Archer. No, as previously stated. Bartels.
No.
Collins. Delon. Donaldson.
Yes.
Eckert.
Yes.
Fabiano.
No.
Gerantin. Green.
Yes.
Haynes.
No.
Hepner.
Yes.
Litz.
No.
Lopez. Mayo. Maloney James.
No.
Maloney Joseph.
Yes.
Nolan.
No.
Pettit. Roberts.
No.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ronk.
Yes.
Woro. Waltman.
No.
The amendment is defeated 10 to 13.
Is it on this?
It is.
No. Can you, can you make it when we, when we are on the budget and home?
Sure.
All right. I'm working on it. Amendment 23, to increase the appropriation for Artsman Hudson within the other Performing Arts Department. Legislature Donaldson.
Uh, yes, I would like to amend that to 7,000. That was the agreed-upon amount in the, that passed unanimously in the Legislative Programs Committee. And somehow I got to 12,500. I think it was a little confusion over the executive putting money into a side, into his economic development, creative economy, whatever it was.
Let's, uh, let's get a second on, I'll just read the sponsor in the second and then you make that amendment, fair?
I'll, I'll second the amendment.
All right. Move by Donaldson, seconded by Rodriguez. Now you're moving to reduce it to 7,500? 7,000?
Yes, 7,000. That was the agreed-upon amount, and I did have a conversation with the County Executive yesterday in reference to it. Um, yeah, I mean, he actually supported the idea of more money going in.
Okay.
But he was concerned, he wanted it, put in the place that he wanted it put in, and he said that it was, his reasoning was to stabilize funding. I mean, that's, was his reasoning, so I'm not going to, um, uh, weigh in on that. But anyway, I'd like to add the 7,000, that's what we agreed upon in our committee. And I will have a conversation with him in the new year about how we can enhance it even more.
Moved, all right, so you're amending the amendment down to 7,000. Legislature Rodriguez, are you seconding that as well? Seconded by Legislature Rodriguez on the amendment?
Can we be a short yes on that part? All right, short yes.
The amendment is adopted 23 to 0.
On, on the, on the amendment in chief, Legislature Nolan?
Yes, I prefer that the monies that we appropriate to various good endeavors generally go through a procurement process that gives us a good sense of the, what we're obtaining and what the requirements will be of the people who receive the funds. So, I support this being in the Executive's Office and managed there. The, this, in this particular case, I think the outcome will be the same, because I think when we have a, a procurement process where there is an organization that does great work that we can then, we can make, you know, we can get those funds to them as they are needed. And I, I think that the, uh, the other point that Legislature Donaldson made about how it would... about how it would, um, I forgot my point, sorry. Yep.
Okay. Um, anybody else like to speak? Hearing none?
We are a short yes with the following nos: legislators Bartels and Nolan.
Uh, legislator, uh, would you talk about it with the, when we're in the budget and hold?
Yes.
Okay. Um, write it down.
Write it down.
Uh, amendment 24, to increase the appropriation for, oh, I'm sorry, that's fine. Yeah.
Because they're changing stuff.
It passed on the House.
No, she had that, she said tidy.
All right, but I'm sorry, I have to add one more. Hold on there. Waltman.
So how many yeses do you have in total?
I have four yeses.
And then Hector.
And Hector, how many nos did you have?
Two. Bartels and Nolan.
Four yeses, and that's 10. So that's 14?
Sounds right to me.
Yeah, it, it's adopted 14, as amended, 14 to 9.
I can move on now. All right. Amendment number 24, to increase the appropriation-
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to take amendment 12 off the table. As you know, we postponed it until we had finished all the arts funding.
Fair enough. I was going to do it at the end, but you want to do it this way, I'm fine. Wasn't on the table, but, that having been said-
It's technically actually out of order, but that's all right.
Legis, yeah, yo, so, so you, are you going to make the motion now, Hector, or is legislator Archer going to do it?
I think that legislator Archer, it's her amendment, I'll let her do it.
Well, she was going to do it at the end. Legislature Archer? Moved, yeah, moved by legislator Archer, is there a second? There we go, legislator Rodriguez seconds it.
And I would, hopefully, the clerk of the legislature has been tallying up all the yeses for the amendments, so that we could back out of the 200 what has been approved. Excellent, thank you, so-
That's why she's the deputy clerk fiscal analyst, maybe.
So we have a balance in, that is going into contingency of? Thank you very much.
Uh, we are a short yes with-
Well, do you have to make it amended because it's 200,000, and then have to do the amendment, and then the-
No, because it's, no.
Kathy, you sold it out.
Oh, okay.
Because the other, the other number has already been amended, so now that's, yeah.
And we also, I think, in the front, actually, it said that it would, it would be changed, so, so we are a short yes with one no, legislator Nolan.
The amendment is adopted 22 to 1.
Now legislator Rodriguez, I may move on to amendment number 24?
You may do whatever you want.
Fantastic. Amendment number 24 is to increase the appropriation for Ulster County Community Action, moved by legislators, legislator Collins, seconded by legislator Rodriguez, Haynes et al. Uh, legislator Nolan?
I could bring my comment in here at this point, I believe.
Okay.
The, the issue is whether or not these programs can achieve more stability by being moved into a programmatic form of funding, and I had an instance of that just the past week. I went to welcome and do an introduction at the Eating Disorders Coalition. That group had been funded through this amendment process for several years by legislator Carl Bofiglio, who, who had a member of his family who suffered from an eating disorder, and after a few years, the program was moved into the Office of Mental Health, where it fits with other programs and can receive grant funding, so that the funding is coming other than county sources, and so that's a benefit to the taxpayers, but it's also a benefit to the program, which had to basically fight for its life each year as an amendment, when it actually has a very nice fit within the work that the county is doing and other programs. So having seen that with a specific example, and seen the benefit that, that coalition brings, I was, you know, reinforced in my desire to try to have both good procurement and good management, and a long-term home for many of these programs, such as the education of our youth about alcohol and cigarette smoking and marijuana, and anti-bullying campaigns. I think that there is a real possibility, in fact, a likelihood, that those programs will be funded better and run better, and people will know more about them if they fit within programs that we're running. Thank you.
Legislature Haynes?
I, I just would like to say that I actually agree with legislator Nolan, that is a more appropriate way to appropriate these programs and securing funding for them, so I would just like to agree with her as well.
On the amendment?
Okay. Uh, we're going to be a short yes with the following nos: Ronk, Janting, Mayo, Roberts.
We are a short yes with one no, legislator Nolan.
The amendment is adopted 17 to 5.
Um, legislator Eckert, you came in after we had started voting, so I'd like to give you the opportunity to record votes on any of the amendments that we adopted while, before you, before you arrived.
That sounds like a lot of recall.
I could just, I could just read them out for you if you'd like.
Um, yeah, I am, uh, thank you, Hector, I am a short yes on everything that has been discussed up until I walked in.
All right, so record legislator Eckert as a yes on every amendment prior to her arrival. Hold, um, do you want to announce that first, or do you want me to ask if anybody else would like to change any votes?
You should ask if any.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to change any votes that they've made on any of the amendments? Legislature Haynes?
Yes, for the record, I would like you to please record my vote in the negative on amendment number one. Thank you.
Uh, legislator Lopez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to change my vote on the ADA salary increases to a yes.
Legislator Fabiano?
Yes, I would also like to change my vote on the ADAs to a vote to a yes.
Uh, legislator Jim Maloney?
On the ADAs, I would also like to change my vote to a yes.
I'm waiting. Uh, Woro, but I hadn't gotten there yet because Vicki asked me to stop.
No, I asked. Okay, so I had legislator James Maloney changing on that one, legislator Fabiano, legislator Lopez.
And legislator Woro.
Legislator Woro. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
That is on amendment.
We're talking about amendment 22.
Yeah, 22.
Yes, four yeses, but, oh, legislator Eckert was already here for that one.
Yeah.
So, now that amendment is adopted 14 to 8.
Anybody else on anything before we move on to the budgets and hold? Uh, legislator Green?
I, I just want to know how, um-
Can you update, can you update any of the other nos, Vicki?
I can update every single one, or I can update the two that are now significantly-
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
The rest of them will change by one, but the, the final outcome did not matter, except for, I just have to find which ones they were. So the two amendments that were 11-11, so amendment number 16 for the Department of Environment extra person is now adopted 12 to 11, and then the amendment for the restorative justice program is now adopted 12 to 11.
Resolution number 469 in total, adopting the Ulster County budget for the fiscal year, commens-
4%.
Didn't that what I said? 479, and making appropriations for the conduct of county government on, on the budget. Anybody, anybody want to speak? Joe?
What I was going to bring up before was, it looked like, one, it's a non, a non-point now, other than that, I, I thought that, that everybody was getting a 2%. It looked like one of the ADAs I was talking about was only getting a 1.31% that Amber had found. That's, I was just going to say, if they're not getting it, can we get them to 2?
Oh, okay.
So it's a non-point.
All right. Anybody else? Legislature Mayor on the budget?
On the budget.
Vote.
Oh.
As amended.
Short yes.
The resolution is adopted 23 to 0. Resolution 480, adopting the Ulster County capital program for 2019, 2024.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm waiting. Legislature Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
On the capital plan?
Are you a short yes?
Short yes.
For the record, I'm going to correct the vote that we just had because legislator Litz left, so the budget is adopted as amended 22 to 0, and the capital program is adopted 22 to 0.
All right, the, that's the last resolution of the evening. The next regular meeting of the Ulster County Legislature will be held on Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, at 6:30. 6:30, everyone, please take note of the time, it is a half hour earlier than normal. In legislative chambers, sixth floor, Ulster County Office Building, 244 Fair Street in Kingston, New York, and, you know, please, everybody, remember if you haven't given your RSVP to Fawn, or haven't given your money to Fawn, or haven't made arrangements to give your money to Fawn, please do so for our holiday party. It's going to be held at De Bellas on 405 Lucas Avenue in Kingston, and I think it's going to be a really good time to spend some time with one another and, and outside of the, outside of the rigmarole of the legislature. And with that, legislator Rodriguez?
Who, who, sir?
Seconded by legislator Mayo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
[inaudible][1783.63]